Good evening, everybody. Got a full house tonight. Thanks for all being here. We will move to item D, the swearing in of Police Lieutenant Robert Lipscomb.
Okay. Repeat after me. Raise your hand. I, Robert Lipscomb.
I, Robert Lipscomb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
And perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As patrol, as patrolman of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
Patrolman of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
He's a lieutenant. That's a lieutenant.
Does it say officer?
Yeah. Should have been lieutenant down.
Chief, if you have anything you'd like to add.
It does say patrolman. Yeah, it's the wrong oath. But we're going to do over.
We can, we should make a change. We do need to update. It does say patrolman. We will update that to lieutenant instead of patrolman.
Now he's a, now he's a patrolman.
All right, chief, we're good. Okay. Congratulations, Rob. Rob, Lieutenant. It's been a long time coming. Lieutenant Lipscomb's been with us for eight years. And a lot of you know him as our K-9 officer. He'll continue to do that with K-9 Luke. One of the most difficult tasks an officer can take on is to be a K-9 officer. The K-9 program that Rob has done has been spectacular. If any of you have seen Luke operate, he is the best K-9 in Northwest Ohio. I will put him up against anybody. And that is because Rob is such a spectacular handler. And I can't say enough about that. Handling dogs and handling officers, two totally different things. We'll see. But he's got what it takes, I guarantee you. So couldn't be prouder of him, and I appreciate it. His spectacular family, those two kids brighten up our day whenever they come around to the office. So we definitely would love to give him a lot more. But thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. We appreciate your support. All right, we will move to item E, the approval of minutes. Any objections or corrections? The minutes shall stand approved from the February 3, 2025, rated council meeting. Hearing none, those will stand approved. Item F, the citizen communication. If anyone is in attendance tonight that would like to address council, now would be the time to do so. We just asked that you would come forward, place your name and address on the form on the podium, and then state that for the record, please.
I suspect, nobody's in speed, but I suspect y'all are here in support of pickleball courts. Is that correct?
Would, would anybody like to say anything? You're free to, like you said, just step up to the podium, state your name. Don't be shy.
Looks like you have a good support system back there, so I think you're good.
Yeah. They've got us outnumbered.
I guess initially, when all this talk came about, I was pleased that we were talking at least about the pickleball, because we talked about it probably six, seven years ago at a park and recreation meeting. And of course, nothing happened. In the meantime, we've got a senior center. And indoors and adequate outdoors. We've got the new courts, which have been a blessing. But it is for seniors. And as a lifelong resident, I'm an employee, and I like the whole community involved with pickleball. I've been working with my grandson to play. It's a family sport anymore. So I think the need is here. And what happens, I guess, is up to you. My initial thought with the Swearingen Park Court, or I still call it the tennis courts. That's where we started playing tennis. But I thought maybe that wasn't a good idea. But since talking to some of the other players, I think there are some issues we've heard of in a residential area. The noise may be a problem. Sometimes, I look at the area, I think maybe parking might be a problem. So in the meantime, we've watched the whole area, all the towns around. Defiance, Waseon, everything's exploded as far as pickleball is concerned. I personally play in Defiance three times a week. You know, compliments of the city of Defiance. Because at the senior center, of course, it's for seniors, and we've had, we've had an issue with not being able to play after four o'clock. Seniors that are employed have never been able to play at the senior center, indoors or out. So the only people playing in Napoleon are our small group of seniors. We'd like to see it open up more to the community. I'm interested in if we've thought of other options as far as pickleball courts. Defiance, of course, is a bigger community. Turned Kingsbury Park into six courts. And they're used, illegally, or eight courts, maybe, every day. And Waseon, smaller community, has built, the city has built six courts at Homecoming Park, which I, I use once a week at least. Compliments of the city of Waseon. We have six courts in Bryan. Even Pettisville has, I think, three courts. Small communities. I think Deschler does. May has some courts now. It's just like, I feel like Napoleon's kind of a step back from maybe where we should be. So I just, I'm here to find out, have we thought about the issues that would come about at Swearingen Park? As like I said, as noise, parking, restroom facilities, that sort of thing. In a perfect world, in a perfect pickleball world, we'd have maybe six courts at Oakwood. I see Central School, and everybody's got their opinion about the Central School situation. I see the concrete there, and I see pickleball courts. I see the gymnasiums, I see pickleball courts. But anyway, what I'm here is to find out your, all your thoughts on it.
Thank you for coming. Before we answer that question, would you mind just stating your name and address for the record? You're totally fine.
I'm Beverly Nelson. I live at Level 46, County North in Napoleon.
Thank you, Beverly, appreciate that. I know that there's been many discussions had around the pickleball courts between the city manager, the Parks and Rec director, their board, the committee. I believe there's a meeting scheduled, or intended to be scheduled, for March 4th, the first Tuesday. March.
March, March 5th is Ash Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't, have you set a date, Tony?
I've already with the board, whether that Monday could be viable. But certainly sometime that week.
So I know those other options are being explored. The initial plan was for Swearingen Park on the south side there. I think as of now, that is still the plan. But until their board can convene and deliberate, that will stay the plan. So hopefully that helps answer some of your questions, Beverly.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll think of something later.
I would encourage you to, if you can, attend that Parks and Rec meeting. I'm sure Tony would, would love the attendance and the feedback at that point, so.
Okay. So who makes those final decisions or?
So the, the board and committee will make a recommendation to council, and at that point, council will approve it. Or deny.
The, the, there are, there is money budgeted in the 25 budget for pickleball courts. For the, for our original plan, to place them over at, over House Park. Or at Swearingen Park, I'm sorry. Gosh, now, don't put that in the paper. Over at Swearingen Park. Since then, Tony and I and others have started to evaluate some other options, some other locations. But we'll, we'll see exactly where it lands. But over the next, I would say, month, month and a half, we will certainly determine what we're going to do this year.
I guess, my concern is the growth, because it's, you know, the other time.
Oh, yeah. Popular sport.
Yeah.
But no, I appreciate you coming out. Appreciate your willingness to come up and speak about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we'll move to item G, reports from council committees. G1, the Personnel Committee met on February 17, 2025. And Mr. Mayor.
We discussed the appointed authority, open position, city manager position. And our HR director did post that position today. And our next meeting, I didn't have a date. Do you remember when our next meeting would be?
March 10?
11.
11.
Thank you. Thank you. Her, yeah, next meeting will be on March 11th at 2:00.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item G2, the Election Committee did not meet on February 10, 2025 due to lack of agenda items. G3, the Water, Sewer, Recycling, and Litter Committee did not meet on February 10, 2025 due to lack of agenda items. The Municipal Properties Building Land Use and ED Committee met on February 10, 2025. And Mr. Weitzel.
Yes, we met and discussed at length the cemetery fees. And was presented with a plan to increase those fees at a reasonable rate. And the board made a motion to recommend to council to accept that when the city manager requests soon.
Thank you, sir. G5, Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet on February 17, 2025 due to lack of agenda items. And G6, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Structure and Compensation Personnel will meet on February 19, 2025. And Brittany, you want to take that one?
Yes, we'll discuss performance evaluation forms and finalizing or moving towards a formal review of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. I1 is Resolution Number 005-25, a resolution providing for assistance to the law director, settling a rate of compensation, authorizing the expenditure of funds over $50,000. Also directing the finance director to transfer certain fund balances in Transfer Number 1, from respective funds to other funds pursuant to ORC Section 5705.14 regarding the expenditure and declaring emergency.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
One second.
Billy? Thank you, Council President. So this legislation here, and 6, and 10 as well, are all pertaining to the same topic, more or less, but different variations of things that I would need to have approved, to have assistant law directors appointed. As you know, my paralegal gave me here two weeks, three weeks ago. And I'm in a situation now where I'm the only person remaining in the law department. As discussed previously, finding a paralegal with municipal law experience, and certainly with any experience working within the city, is going to be a difficult task. I had already begun prior to receiving the information that my paralegal was going to go. So I started discussions with some local law firms, two in Henry County and one in Fulton County, for reasons I won't go into here. I've chosen to attempt to work with Barbara Caperstam out of Fulton County. They would provide three attorneys that would act as assistants to me. For continuity's sake, this would be good. They do work for Waseon. Currently, they have a law director there, and then I think three or four assistants out of the same firm who, who do that work for Waseon. So I think that this would be a good step for, for continuity's sake. And additionally, I think it would be very, very nice to have some backup. For me, in this position, if I were hit by a bus, it would be, it would be nice to have somebody who could fill this real quickly. And they would be able to do that. Primarily, they would be helping out prosecuting the misdemeanor and traffic cases. That's going to be necessary because for the short to intermediate term, I'm going to stay in the office and kind of take on some of the role that Tammy took, or my assistant paralegal took, in answering questions as they come in and so on. This is, I believe, the best path forward, given the, the short period of time. I was, I was given to, to try to solve this, this issue. And I think this is a good short, short-term plan to slash intermediate-term plan to get, to keep things rolling smoothly out of law, out of law department. So I am asking for suspension on this, because I'm hoping that they can start, actually, the agreement is starting on March 3. So to start prosecuting the section and bringing them into the office as well, to show them how things are done here. And to move forward, starting March 3. Thank you, Billy, thank you.
Questions or comments?
I have one question. How many hours do you anticipate in either a week or a month?
So the, the agreement would be for 28 hours for the month. I believe it will go over that. So the base amount is going to be slightly north of about $60,000 per year. I would estimate somewhere between 10, 15, 20 over that likely in a year. But based on the number of hours, I expect that they'll have to be out of meeting court and helping me. That's my rough estimate. It's going to be slightly less than the previous salary situation that we had. So I think they would go save a little bit of money that way. Yeah, hopefully I've answered your question.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate using the firm less, once we do find someone to help us?
I, I don't anticipate moving very quickly to find someone, I guess would be the best way to put that. I think that I can handle things in the office, and I think that that would likely save the city some money if I were to take my time and find the right person. And certainly would save me a lot of headache. To find the right person, instead of just placing somebody there who would answer the phone and then ask me 100 questions a day. So I'm going to, I am going to be looking, but I am going to be looking for the exact right person, if that person exists locally. It's going to be, it's going to be difficult, because a paralegal, finding a paralegal is going to be very important. Finding somebody with municipal law experience is going to be very important. And that person doesn't work here currently, obviously. So even after I find somebody with those qualifications, getting them trained up to, to the level of where my previous assistant was, is going to take a couple of years, I think.
Anything else?
Motion for suspension.
Second. Mr. Weitzel. Michaela, please call a roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
And please call a roll on the resolution.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read, under emergency by suspension. Thank you.
That was very needed, buddy.
Maybe you can sleep this evening.
Item I2 is Resolution Number 006-25, a resolution amending Resolution Number 044-24, the city's yearly reoccurring cost legislation and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Thank you. Billy, I think this one's yours.
I'll take this one as well, thank you. I won't repeat the same speech that I just gave. This is adding Barbara Caperstam to the yearly reoccurring cost legislation, so that next year, when we're doing budgeting, we don't have to pass a whole separate piece of legislation. They'll already be, they'll already be on the list.
Thank you, sir. And suspension is also requested on this. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? If not, I would entertain a motion for suspension. Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Brittany. Michaela, please call a roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
And please call a roll on the resolution.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
That has also passed on first read, under emergency by suspension. Item I3 is ordinance number 007-25, and ordinance amending Chapter 955 of the Codified Code of Ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, specifically Sections 955.09 are golf privilege B.
Motion.
One second.
Yes, Ross, I will pass this one along to Tony and have him explain what he wants and why he wants it.
This is the recommendation that came from the Parks and Rec Board. What we're asking for is a cross-board increase of $200 on each of our five tiers of corporate partnerships. Those tiers are 25 and under, that's employees of each company, 26 to 50, 50 to 100, 100 to 200, and over 200 employees of each of which. These have not been adjusted since we put them in place, so.
Thank you, Tony. Questions or comments for Tony? I'm hearing none. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Brittany. Yes.
That will move to second read. Thank you again, Tom. Item I4 is ordinance number 008-25, and ordinance authorizing the performance-based pay increase for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, law director and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion? Second. On this, after starting performance evaluations in October, we came to the decision last meeting to give a performance-based pay increase to Billy. So this is just the ordinance authorizing that. So does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Because this goes retroback to January 1st, if, if, if council decides, my suggestion would be that we suspend the rule and pass it, unless obviously there's objection. Then that way, we can get the retro pay caught up as quickly as possible, and then that rate is effective. Pay rule is this week. I can't guarantee that if it passes tonight that we would get it retroback, but it definitely would be the next pay period, instead of waiting until, at this point, end of March.
Thank you, Michaela. I'm sorry.
Attention cycles that will help get them out of that.
Okay. Thank you, Brittany. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion for suspension?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call a roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
And please call a roll on the ordinance.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
No.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
No.
Brittany.
Yes.
That has passed on first read, under emergency by suspension. Thank you. Thank you, Billy. Item I5 is ordinance number 009-25, and ordinance authorizing a performance-based pay increase for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, city manager and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion? So move.
One second.
Again, based off of the performance evaluations started in October, we saw it fit to increase Andy's pay. So this is just the ordinance authorizing us to do so. Unless there are any questions or comments on this one, I would also entertain a motion for suspension. Move suspension.
One second.
Michaela, please call a roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
And Michaela, please call a roll on the ordinance.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
No.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
No.
Brittany.
Yes.
That has passed on first read, under emergency by suspension. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Item I6 is ordinance number 010-25, and ordinance amending ordinance number 041-24 regarding compensation of the city of Napoleon, assistant to the city law director position for the year 2025, and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Thank you, Council President. This is the third and final piece of the legislation necessary to let this agreement into place, essentially adding three assistants to the pay scale. So that, at the, at the agreed-upon rate. But adding them to the pay scale and moving forward for the rest of the year, they'll be on the pay scale.
Thank you, Billy.
And suspension is requested for the same reasons.
Questions or comments on this one? Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion for suspension?
Motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call a roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
And please call a roll on the ordinance.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
That has also passed on first read, under emergency by suspension. Item J, second reading of ordinances and resolutions, there are none this evening. Item K, third reading of ordinances and resolutions, there are also none. Item L is good of the city. L1 is discussion or action, the approval of the power supply cost adjustment factor for February 2025, SPSCA three-month average factor, 0.01450, and JV2, 0.03437. Andy.
Yes, Council President, this rate adjustment is holding steady to down even a little bit from last month. It's still about seven tenths of a penny lower per kilowatt hour than it was a year ago. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when the average user uses over 950 kilowatt hours per month, that equates to about $5. And if somebody is all-electric, their savings are about $12 when it's down just seven tenths of a penny. So it does make a difference. But otherwise, there's nothing significant about the rate this month.
Do you know what's driving that, Andy?
Driving the consistency in rates.
Yeah. I know that they were talking about bringing some of the plants back online, cost increasing. I was curious if you knew.
Yeah, no. Primarily, the price of natural gas still is pretty low. Prairie State, our coal-fired plant's been running consistently again now. And, and everything. And and everything else, for that matter, is is up and running again. So things are pretty stable at the point, at the present time.
Thank you, Andy.
I have a question. When do they tear down the windmill over by Bowling Green?
That's scheduled to come down this year.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been AMP has been socking away money over the years for those teardown costs. And so we won't see any difference in our rates, really. We use so little of that power. Such a small portfolio. I think it's like two tenths of 1% or something. It's a very small portion. But yeah, those those are scheduled to come down in '25.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Item L two, discussion or action, update the cemetery rates and fees. Andy, what do you have there?
Yes, Counsel President, the Municipal Properties Subcommittee met or Committee met last Monday. We presented a change in all the the rates and fees for the cemeteries in terms of the cost for lots as well as burial costs. We made an increase in each one of those. Those rates have not been adjusted in over 20 years. And we looked at the inflation factor as well as local cemetery rates to come up with some fair prices or fees. And so we would like to put that into legislation and ask you to have the Law Director draft the necessary legislation to bring it forth next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to direct the Law Director?
So moved.
One second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Item L three, discussion or action to accept a $4,000 donation from the Ford County Adams H S Board to the Police Department for the Dare and Lead Program. Andy.
Yes, Counsel President, those are our drug prevention programs. I will allow Chief Legg to speak to it if Chief Legg is gone. I can speak to it. Those are the drug prevention programs, and I believe those are for fifth graders. Is that right? Fifth graders. This is an annual, we get this grant annually from the Adams H Board, and it's used to purchase workbooks, teaching materials, prizes, and graduation items for those kids that go through these programs. Again, it's a grant that we receive annually.
Thank you, Andy.
Do we apply for the grant this evening?
Do we apply for it? Or is it just given to local?
Brad handles that part of it. I don't know these amounts of the application process. Just want to add for it, if I'm not mistaken.
I do want to just give Officer Strickland his kudos. This is something he's very passionate about.
It is.
He's been very diligent in getting the these donations and grants in place. And I think he does a wonderful job with it. My kids have taken it, and they definitely enjoy it. So just want to thank him. With that said, is there a motion to accept the donation?
Motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab. Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
That has been accepted. Item L four, discussion or action. The City of Napoleon's Department of Public Works requests approval for the purchase of a new large dump truck from the state purchasing contract. Andy?
As Counsel President, I will pass that along to my Director of Public Works to explain his need there.
Yes, as we discussed in the budget meetings last fall, one of our large dump trucks would need to be rotated out. The current truck is a 2004 Sterling Actara. We've got some pricing. We can purchase a 2026 brake liner chassis, and then it would be outfitted with a quick-change salt insert. To put that in simple terms, if we put the salt apparatus on our trucks, it takes a couple hours. This truck we're replacing has something we can take on and off in about 10 minutes. This truck will be outfitted with the same rear end so that if we need a dump truck in the winter, say for a main break or something, we don't spend two hours with salt apparatus out back. The estimated cost for the chassis and outfitting of the truck is $270,593. We do have $300,000 in the budget, so we're about $30,000 under what was put in the budget for this year. So we're just asking for approval to make this purchase. We were told if we get approval, this truck cannot be started until October. So we will not see this truck at the city probably till next summer, summer '26. But just request some approval so we can go ahead and make this purchase.
Thank you, Chad.
Yep.
Any questions from Counsel?
So if with the approval, does this lock the price in at that?
Yes. The distributor contacted us last week and asked us if we were ready to move forward. I explained we had to get counsel approval. So as tomorrow, we'll call in if it's approved and tell him to go ahead, and we'll be on the list.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chad. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
That has been approved. Item L five, discussion or action. The City of Napoleon's Electric Department requests approval for the purchase of a new bucket truck from the state purchasing contract 015-25. Andy?
As Counsel President, I will pass this one along to my electric superintendent, Mr. Greg Kuhlmann. You're welcome.
We're asking counsel permission to move ahead with the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-40 D-Cab chassis. It's a 40-stone aerial power. It's replacing a 2015 Ford. This is the service director, our current employee, Dave. Later, drag around, just some of the minor load loading's caused customers, singularity, this thing. But it's 10 years old, it's got 117,000 miles on it. It's probably been through 10 sets of brakes. But no, it's seen its day. It's going to be replaced.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, I might add Ross with that, depending on what you want to add.
Okay. I also wanted to point out, it is budgeted in 2025, budget for $300,000, and this is coming in well below at 261, so appreciate that, Greg. Okay, item L six, discussion or action. The City of Napoleon's Electric Department requests approval to proceed with issuing a request for proposal of a 6912.47 KV, 20.0, 26.7, 33.3 MVA, three-phase power transformer with LTC for good. I'm trying to nail that, Greg.
Ross.
I was gonna say, could you repeat that?
What does that mean?
Nailed it.
Maybe I'll turn it over to you.
And I will turn it over, back over to the Electric Department. Not sure if Greg or Mike is going to handle that. So this is a big project, and this is just one part of the rebuild out of the Enterprise substation?
It's just the purpose of the transformer to get this ball roll. It's a three-year wait on this transforming. So. It's much bigger. It's the, this is the transformer that takes the 69 volt back down to a distribution level.
This is something we started talking about two years ago.
Or longer. I mean, it's been in the works quite a while.
It's been four, five years.
Yes.
And it was all part of AMP Transmission taking over the transmission portion of our system. And when we received the funding from them for our assets, then we agreed to invest it back into the rebuild of the substation, so.
It's a, it's a little bigger transformer than what we have. And it's, if we're gonna get anywhere and expand it out in the industrial park area, this transformer is kind of a must.
Thank you, Greg. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. We'll go around the table. Andy, can I start with you this evening?
I have nothing.
Billy?
Nothing for me this evening.
Jordan?
Nothing for me.
Nothing.
Ken?
I left my ice skates at home.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, hearing a lot about Electric Department, so it reminded me of a couple that moved back to Napoleon recently. They were in the Waterville area with First Energy. And they showed me their bill that they their last bill they got from the apartment. They were living in in Waterville. And after they got the first bill that they had for Napoleon, and they were pleasantly surprised at the difference in the rate. And most of the time in December, they weren't even at their apartment. They were in the process of moving, so they've had had their heat very low. They weren't using a lot of stuff. And the amount of money that they're saving here in Napoleon with our electric, they're very thrilled. Thank you guys for everything you guys do, trying to keep our prices down and and keeping it, keeping it going for us. That's all I have.
Brittany. Dr. Dave.
Tom.
Good, thank you.
Kevin?
I just want to thank the Operations Department and the Direct Department for coming in this weekend and clearing off the roads and the sidewalks. You know, it's it's something that we're asked to do for the protection of our citizens and make our city better. And I thought they did a great job considering as much ice and snow we had. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin.
I do have one thing. The intersection of Scott Street and West Washington, with the snow on the road, I had a couple of citizens just comment that the lanes, the turn lane, and the lane going straight can be a bit confusing. I think they got cut off a couple of times potentially.